...the regular meeting, so we're gonna move right into presentations now. I think Matt is gonna start us off.
Lori Rudolph is with us tonight. Lori is joining us. She was recently appointed at the last board meeting as a teacher assistant. She's come to us from these eighteen years at Embar, where she served in a similar capacity. We're thrilled to add her to our team here in Oakfield. So she's gonna start. She's already went through a new teaching orientation. We've got her pushing into some classrooms. We gotta do her variety of things. So Embar's loss is our gain. She's gonna be a huge asset to our students. So Lori, welcome to Oakfield.
Thank you.
From there, I think we're going into our building condition presentation. I think, Teri, you're gonna scroll through that.
Oh, I have to scroll?
Yeah, because it looks like a PDF.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
It's okay.
PDF stuff.
You just scroll through it.
I'll scroll.
You can zoom it to it from there.
I did that because I didn't want to scroll up.
See the bottom right corner is a plus there if you want to zoom in.
Yeah, it's inside of you, so.
All right, well, thanks for the opportunity to have us back. We're all with SEI Design Group, District's Architect in Rochester. I'm Ted Mountain, Principal at SEI. We've got Rich Littles, Project Manager, and Jimmy Von Schaffel is working on the design and constructibility of some of the concepts we're coming up with. I wanna give you kind of a quick update tonight on where we are, see if you have any questions, and basically give you kind of a where we are in the process with the building condition survey. If you recall, last time, we talked about the building condition survey as a state requirement that's due every five years for districts. That's a tool that we're using to essentially go through the buildings and identify what are the needs, infrastructure program, co-issues that we wanna look at as possible projects for the overall capital job. Once we get done with that condition survey, we will submit SED. That'll probably be sometime next year. And then we use that to plan out all our budgets for your project. And Rich has an example here of kind of a draft of what this is gonna look like in hard form when we're done. We've collected most of the data at this point and done a lot of the estimating. Now it's a matter of polishing it, looking at additional projects, meeting with additional stakeholders, and coming up with recommendations for the board. So the next slide is just a kind of a snapshot of where we are right now. So SEI Design Group, our firm, does the architectural review. So that's bricks and mortar, the building itself, the envelope, all the finishes, things like that. We have a team under us that has been through the buildings as well that we hire. You can see there mechanical, plumbing, electrical, and civil. So we've had site engineers out here. We've done reviews of the existing fields. We've done observations of some of the issues with drop-off and pickup and the traffic pattern in the front with the buses and cars and parent drop-off and waters. And mechanical, plumbing, and electrical engineers went through the whole building, looked at all your systems, electrical systems, lighting, the boiler rooms, all the mechanicals and plumbing systems, so that we could come up with a, basically, a wide net list of what some of the projects could be. The scope list was created to fix those deficiencies, and we have cast a wide net and created quite a large list of projects. And it's really up to the district and the board and with us helping you going forward to pare that down and come up with a recommendation for a project. The building condition survey will have scope of the projects and costs in there. It will include full costs of the project, so not just the bricks and mortar, but also any other costs the district would require to get the project complete. And we'll have floor plans in there that'll show vintages, different types of systems by area, and these'll all be a working resource that we can use with the district and keep this as a working document throughout the process of going into a capital project and a vote. There may be some special studies and reports, too, that we can do and include in there as well. Just as an overview, this slide shows some of the output of the building condition survey so when we're done, you'll be able to see by building where some of the values are, if it's more in infrastructure, if it's more in HVAC, if it's more in site work, if it's more in envelope. Those charts will be included in the building condition survey binder. The next tab shows, really, let's cut to the chase and see what the total is right now. So what you're gonna have is a chart like this that's gonna show essentially, these are different buildings. This is the elementary, the high school, the bus garage. What's the SED number? What are some of the costs that we're seeing coming in? And then incidental costs are the soft costs or costs on top of the bricks and mortar of the project that we track, which includes design and the construction manager and lawyers and those types of costs that are required to finish the project. Currently, you'll see here that we've identified about $28 million of total project value, and our job is to help you over the next few months to get that number down to a value that we feel could be a potential capital project. So there's a wide net. There's a lot of things included in there. Some things are overlapping. If we do this, you know, do we do this other piece? It depends on which way we go in certain areas as to what costs are included, but we need to now look at that total and start to work with you to help you to get it down. The next slide is where do we go from here? And the slide after that is our pre-planning slide. So we've got the BCS list, we've got the projects, we've got costs associated with them. We propose now to hold a series of facility committee meetings with a little bit wider group. So far, we've been working with the administration, the district office. We've met several times with principals and leaders at each building, but we will get additional people involved now and go through the list and make recommendations. That recommendation would theoretically or could go to the board in the fall, we feel is a reasonable timeline. And then, of course, it's your project, so the scope is adjusted based on your comments. Facility committee can make recommendations, but ultimately, it's your project to include or not include different pieces in the final. Another piece to it, I think we mentioned last time, is the SEQR. So if you see that, S-E-Q-R, it's basically the State Environmental Quality Process, and that's required to be done prior to the vote. So whatever we come up with, if we're gonna do, you know, one project on the site or thirty projects on the site, that site scope has to go through a repeat process to make sure there aren't serious or important environmental impacts. Once that's done, then you can go for a vote after that. We're putting up here vote December of nineteen or spring of twenty. That's really to be determined on how the process goes. We're thinking right now it might go into 2020, just so you have the time that we need to go through the process, not too quickly. If that happens and we did vote next year, then we would go into design at that point, which would be more detailed designs and drawings for contractors, an SED review in 2020, and construction would be happening over the next two or three years after that. And at this point, we wanna give you a quick summary of some of the things we've talked about with the district in terms of some major projects that we're seeing in each building, and Jimmy's gonna run through that real quick with some of these color plans.
Yeah, so starting with the elementary school, we had a few key areas that we kinda talked with some of the principals and other administration to kinda see where they wanted to go with the project. None of this is anything set in stone. None of these are final designs. They're kinda just ideas of what we may or may not wanna try, and then that kinda helps us to drive some of these budgets that we were doing as part of the BCS. So starting at the elementary school office, you can see the highlighted area there, just to get you oriented. Go to the next one here. This is just a quick outline of what that could be. We're trying to get a secure vestibule. We're trying to make the main office look better, work better, function better, separate the nurse out of that space, just because it's kind of a weird space, sick kids versus well-being, well-kids and all of that. And just some really key ideas of what may or may not work and start some conversations to where we can go from there. Keep going to the next one. So then there's also the cafeteria, which has some things that we wanted to upgrade in there. If you go to the next one, there's, we're gonna take out the stage possibly to make that cafeteria bigger, work on the lines so that we can get kids through there a little bit faster, upgrade some ADA stuff. Another piece that we're trying to do is along with the site plan, which I think is in here later, trying to get parent drop-off to not mingle with the buses as much, so we're trying to look at a new space to maybe drop the kids off. So if we, the parents drop-offs, we'll go to the next one here. It's kind of a reconfigured space with a vestibule that's, you know, more energy efficient and getting spaces to work a little bit better than what they might be right now. And then if we jump to the high school, we're really preliminary in the high school stuff. We've gone through a couple of different things with offices that may or may not work, but we've not really prepared to show that, but with the technology wing. If you go to the next slide, we've got the, we met with the technology teacher and kinda came up with some ideas of what might make those spaces in that curriculum work a little bit better, but again, broad brushstrokes to see what we needed to do.
No, you started the whole thing.
Yeah, you can scroll through a couple of these.
Oops, sorry.
That's all right, yeah, scroll through that. And then this is the site. Site was looked at pretty extensively by our civil engineers. We're trying to work on the parking that we have versus what you guys need and where it needs to be located, and bus traffic as far as, you know, some of those safety issues that are, kids coming in, parent drop-off, bus circulation, and how we can improve some of those things, as well as, you know, some possibilities of field work or things that that affect.
These next two can slide best through. They're just enhanced visions of the site plan.
So we also wanna just beautify the campus just a little bit. There's a ton of, you can see it, we've been sealing for days now. So just maybe taking a little bit of the parking lot away, putting more green space and making it just better looking, more pleasing to the eye, aesthetic when you drive up.
Also putting, also putting the parking where it needs to be adjacent to the event or adjacent to the entrance, something providing more access to the buildings. And then the key element is the safety, circulating buses where buses should be, putting parent drop-offs where parents' drop-offs should be, and getting pedestrian walkways throughout the campus, so you can enter on one end and walk all the way through on a paved surface, on a sidewalk, elevated walk, so there's safety in crossing, things like that circulating through. Considerations are what's going on today, what's happened in your buildings, what have you done over the years, what additions, what changes, when were they done, because those are critical with looking at projects and funding. How does that all fall in? So we're looking back at that. The priority list, that's our snapshot in time, where we are today, and it's kind of a master plan. It's all the needs that you have, or, you know, as many as everybody can find and put together, and it's a good look for the district to have in a tool. Even if you don't do it in a project, you look at it as down the road. What are we gonna need in two, five, ten, fifteen years? Those things aren't gonna go away. They're gonna need to be dealt with at some point. Long-term goals in planning with flexibility, we wanna make sure that we're coming up with a master plan that takes into consideration where do we wanna go, not just what we need today, but where do we see the district in that five, ten, fifteen-year vision? We don't wanna do work today that we're gonna have to undo to try to do something else. We wanna try to take those into consideration. The input from stakeholders, that's a huge component here. We wanna make sure that we fold in the people, the users, the people that are taking advantage of the space and understand how is it being used and how can we improve it. We talk a lot about BCS. The BCS is our infrastructure. It's what's going on inside the walls, underneath the floors, up on the roof. As we're doing work in an area, we also wanna take advantage of the funding that comes in at that point and make the area better. So that's where we're gonna look at maximizing program from BCS to the planning, and that's what we'll get from facility teams. Financially sound plan, we wanna make sure that the work we're doing is going to be equitable, that when we send it up to the state and the state comes back, that the state's gonna fund the work back at the rate we're anticipating and what we're planning for. And then the balanced approach, just making sure that everybody's involved. You know, working in a vacuum, just drawing out a space and not talking to people that are using, it's just not gonna work. And so far, it's been a great effort, working with everybody in the district, the experience with interaction, the feedback, and that has been wonderful, so we look forward to continuing. This is kind of a neat chart that we throw together, 'cause every project has a couple of components. What do we need? What do we want? What are we gonna afford? And how do we, how do we make all that work? So you got all these different components put together, but the project ends up being somewhere in the middle. You gotta take all those things, overlay them together, and find the maximum area and maximum benefit out of the whole thing. This is a chart we'll continue to share with you, and we're just kinda moving along through this. We're still up in here, we're working on the plan. Sorry about that. As we move along, we keep getting down, more detail, more information, we have more cost control, but as we start getting down into the finer detail and where we get to bids, that's where we need to have all those decisions made. So that's just kinda walking us along. We'll keep tabs on where we are and how we're going. We went through that pretty quick. Hopefully, it gives you kind of an update of where we are. We're looking forward to wrapping up the document that'll be coming out and being shared with the district. It's going to be a living document. It'll continue to be edited as we make changes or start to build these projects. The spreadsheets will be updated and addressed. This'll be a reference tool for Jordan and his office and wherever else it's felt like it's needed, but it's a good tool for him. It'll have maps in here of the building showing his equipment, and as things get updated, we can kinda keep tabs on it and track of it.
So yeah, your next step slide, so just go over that again. We're gonna get the binder from you. When will you be reaching out to stakeholders? When should we be reaching out to stakeholders? What are we gonna?
As soon as possible. We've been meeting every other week.
Would that be a step or deal?
Right, yeah, so we're gonna form groups, or who we think needs to be in groups, and then make invitations to, I mean, obviously, there are certain considerations. We're gonna ask Jeff, because he's the athletic director. Todd has already been involved, Hoffines, as the tech teacher in the AG, with the AG program, seeing that. So we will, I will work with the administrators and John, and we will decide, you know, the number of groups, and obviously, we will use, at some point, board representation as well in that. And then I think we put a feeler out for, obviously, community groups as well and see where we can go from there. So I know the teachers are excited. Some have already asked me, 'cause I kinda preempted them that we might be doing this over the summer. I mean, I know our timeline's gotten away from us a little bit. I still think we have done a ton of work since April, so they started meeting with us in April, and so this is like less than a six-month turnaround, that they have taken all of our old stuff and really looked at it and just given us this document, sort of, even though it's a living document. It's been an incredible amount of work, so hopefully, in the next two weeks, we will get lists out.
I want to bring settles into school, that we can see.
Right. So you talk about the facelift. Will it be any districts, you'll tell us to drive by and look at from the curb and say, this is kinda what I've got in the back of my mind when I picture what we're gonna do with it?
Yeah, once we know what we're thinking about, we'll talk about different references, whether it's reaching out and talking to people about how it's worked for them, or actually a site that's closed that you can go and take a look at. Depending on the work, we've grabbed a few people and jumped on a small bus to take a ride over or something like that. It depends on the scope and where it is, but we'll always make sure you have something to reference.
I think we've already gotten the name of a district that had, like, similar amounts of blacktop and then went from that to having more green space and how that impacted them. So I think, I mean, we'll start looking at that and obviously inviting other people to do that as well.
We have a full visualization staff that can really help with that, as how it's gonna affect this building particularly, so you don't have to try to pretend like what this might look like based on something else. We make sure that you'll see pretty clearly what our vision is and where we're at.
So are you talking, when you say green spacing, you're talking about adding trees in landscaped areas?
Do you mind if we go back to the site plan or, like?
No, go ahead.
Just go back to the site plan. Just one idea that came out of the site review was what Rich was saying about putting the parking where it needed to be, and that could generate some green in front.
Yeah, so when we looked at this site and we went out here and we actually spent the day watching buses arrive and departure, how it was happening, how students were being dropped off, what we did was looked at, how do we maximize some of these parking areas to create more parking and better circulation? And as we started to push more parking this way and push more parking this way, and we talked about parking in the back, that created this zone in the center here where there's an opportunity to build back some green space. It's the front of your building, it's the approach. It's more of a plaza approach, softened up, so it doesn't look like an arrival to a plaza. It gives you the parking located here where you need it, staff parking, event parking, so we're trying to maximize all of it. So by moving the parking and pavement around, we're not talking about increasing a lot, we'll get some, but the goal here was, at this point, was just to try to maximize it in the right locations and then clean up along the front here, creating a little bit more softer approach. So you have a nice green space over here with some mature trees. There's a nice opportunity in here, but what it also does is breaks up the driveline and creates a more controlled environment for the buses and public to be coming in and out of the site. Right now, it's kind of a...
Safety is not...
Willing to mall parking.
Without striping.
Yeah, without striping and without the ability to know where to go.
Yeah, we were standing, we were standing, we were standing over here watching, we were standing in the front of the elementary school watching the parent drop-off when we turned around and watched where the real interesting part of the site is, and that's everything out in front, so we think there's some good, great opportunities here to fix that.
Please tell me you didn't find anything on the roof.
Pardon me?
Roof's good.
So incorporated in all that, we have a maximum cost allowance, so in terms of the financial piece of that, we can only renovate up to a certain amount. So we are working with our financial advisors on that as well, so hopefully we get one side project.
And we're anticipating that this is probably a phase one. I'm in receipt of every single tiny thing that needs to be fixed, repaired, replaced, or whatever, and within this first project, we're not gonna be able to hit it all, so I think it's really important for the board and stakeholders and the community to really prioritize what they want and wanna see and need to have done first, and then maybe three or four years down the road, do a phase two and a phase three. It's our, it's my hope, it's our hope, I hope it's the district's hope that we can address all of this, but yeah, there's gonna be certain phases where, you know, we're gonna have to prioritize and get things, you know, done first over the next few years.
Some things are small enough that Jordan's people can do them as part of their job on a daily basis, replacing fan covers and certain things, so that helps give him a longer list of things that they can be working on as well. That aren't necessarily huge projects, but might cost a couple thousand dollars, but his people can actually install some of the stuff that we're working on.
Some of the items are already taken off, 'cause we thought, you know, we've already edited some of it that we had to modify. Any other questions? I think we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
J.C.
I'm gonna share with you our district code of conduct process and some of the things that we worked on. The process started with our admin team sitting down. Our code of conduct had not been updated since 2012. It's supposed to be updated yearly, so we're quite behind. We went through, really what we wanted to do was make the document, our student handbook, which is our living, breathing document that we used and updated yearly, match closely resemble our district code of conduct. The revisions the admin team were made were shared with the board. We made a couple more revisions based on input we see from the board. Thank Chris for participating with that as well. We held a public forum, and Justin and a couple of our admin team were there, a couple of our teachers were there as well. I did help get one email from a parent with a concern, which I'll share later, and then we submitted the code of conduct to you for your approval tonight. So that was the process. What has changed? We added some definitions that have, we've needed to, that weren't on the existing older document. SRO, our Alco sensors, Alco blow, the Alco sensor, our metal detector wand, our Raptor system. The old formatting was deplorable. Don't let that bullet underestimate you. That took a lot of work to get fixed. Including in that was a hyperlink table of contents, so if you click on the table of contents, it takes you to the document where you need to go. When I say updated student dress code, we just made it the same as for the district as what we've been using in the high school, so it matches our high school code of conduct for dress code. We updated the code violations. Our school lawyer, who also does our superintendent's hearings over the years, had recommended we add code violations. Those had already been in our student handbook and approved by the board in our student handbook. We just wanted to make our district code of conduct match our student handbook. We updated language to student searches and interviews. You said the different language. I'm, the board made some changes to that at the board level, so we made it to our district code of conduct. We included the language on the Alco blow, Alco sensor, metal detector wands. It mirrors the language in our board policy. We also updated the visitor section to include the Raptor system, needing ID for coming in. It'll scan your government-issued ID, print off a tag for you to wear. And then the one community feedback we did have was a parent who also works in the district whose kid's now, she's an O.A. alum, emailed us regarding what our stance is on backpacks. And I've shared with her that we've, I appreciate her standpoint. She didn't think students should have backpacks on them, and it's something that our admin team will look at at the building level to see if it's appropriate. We have waffled back and forth in years, trying different things to varying degrees of success, so that's something that the building level will address next time. Questions, comments, concerns?
So it's between classes you're talking about with the backpacks?
Um, all of it. So between classes, during class. When I first got here, my, the first thing I was asked to do was make no backpacks be carried around at all. That did not work very well. It was not very easy. Students had a very difficult time getting to classes with their books. It was being unevenly enforced, so there was an enforcement issue. Teachers came back and asked to let the students carry their backpacks. So I think it was last year or the year before, we did allow students to carry their backpacks again. So right now, our students in this building are carrying their backpacks. And that was teacher request, wanted them to be able to do that, help them with getting the kids on time to class.
Chris has a hard time jumping in on Skype. Do you have anything, Chris, being the board representative on this, that you wanna say?
I think the admin team did a nice job on it. J.C. kept me informed along the way, and I'll let this edition go forward.
I think it'd be nice for people who have had children in the district for a long time, they probably don't read the whole code every time it comes out, to emphasize the changes for them, so they can quickly go over that.
Okay. That's pretty much what the, what changed sign is for, so we can do that exact thing. Here are the things that have been updated and changed. And that's not a change from the student handbook that they're already familiar with. So the student handbook language that they're familiar with is actually the same as the stuff. Thank you for the session.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I think we're good. Thanks, J.C.
Thank you.
Connie?
Hello.
Hi.
Tonight, I just wanna present to you the professional development plan. You all have a copy of that in your board packets. So the first question is, why do we have a professional development plan? And the first and foremost reason is New York State Education Department requires each public school to have a professional development plan. It's part of Section 100.2, part Double E. So we have to have that plan, and what I wanna highlight for you is just a couple of the main points of requirements for the plan, and then talk about what's in our plan. So the plan has to align with New York State's professional development standards. The plan has to be certified annually, and this is something that has recently changed. It's always been certified annually, but up until last year, it was a paper certification where the superintendent signed it off and it actually got mailed to State Ed. Now, this has become a digitalized certification, and it's part of S.O. So this is kind of a little bit of a new update with the P.E. plans. It must include a mentoring plan, so if any of you looked at it and noticed, well, why's the mentoring plan here? State now requires your full mentoring plan to be part of the P.E. plan. The mentoring plan in your packets is the existing mentoring plan that I found when I came here to Oakfield. It's something, I've talked to the mentors and actually our new teachers. It will be something that we will work on updating with our mentors and our team next year to make sure it aligns with New York State's mentoring standards. So what you're seeing is as it is right now, but it will be changed in the years to come. The state allows you to have... The state allows you to have a one-year or a multi-year plan. So why else do we have a P D plan? The biggest reason for us at Oakfield to have a P D plan is to support our kids. And how does this P D plan support student achievement? We build teacher capacity. The state, if you've been in education at all, listening, things change a lot, our standards change a lot. And the only way we can help our students learn what they need to learn, achieve, be able to go out to society and be productive, is we helping, by helping our teachers build capacity. So you'll see in the next slide when I talk about it, a large part of our P D plan is building our teachers' capacity so they can help students achieve and learn as they go through our halls. So, our plan highlights, four main areas of focus. The first three shouldn't surprise you considering my title, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. These are big ones right now. The state, if anyone's been watching, common core, we've now, we're shifting to next generation learning standards. Come next year, there's new tests for three through eight. We have to be ready, and I'm gonna be really honest, I know there has not been somebody in this position over the last, I'm not sure how many years. We're not ready. The teachers aren't ready and it has no fault or bearing on the teachers. It's a big, huge process. So curriculum instruction and assessment is something we're gonna focus on for a long time. We started that work already, we're partnering with G V E P to do it. Uh, we've already entered teacher orientations, planted that seed with our new teachers, that this is something that we're doing, we're gonna do it together, we're gonna support them. The last area of focus is culture. And when I say culture, I'm not meaning, oh, the culture here in Oakfield, Alabama, I'm talking culture in general. The State Department, it's, it's not a requirement yet, it's recommendations, it may be a part of social emotional learning, some of the diversity initiatives. Those are things that I'm anticipating are down the pipeline, they may become required. So I want us to be proactive instead of reactive, so we can start exploring some of those areas, partnering with our local B O Cs to make sure the things that we are doing are in alignment with what the state is starting to say. Again, our plan, we developed with assistance from G V B O Cs, they are our go-to experts. They're in the state frequently, they find out what we need to be doing, they're able to bring it back to us. So the actual plan that you see, I partnered with G V B O Cs to make sure we had all the necessary components in it. Uh, our plan is a three-year plan. The reason we made it a three-year plan is curriculum instruction, assessment, culture, doesn't happen in one year. This might be something that's ongoing and continues, but what we do is each year we revisit it. And if there needs to be changes, we'll bring it forth to the board again to say, hey, we made some changes, could you take a look? Is this something that we feel like we should all move forward with? Um, if there's not changes, then we just keep chugging down that path, working on all these areas. And that is it, anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes, be resolved, the minutes of the seven, ten, and eight-six meetings be approved, we have a motion?
So, second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Uh, visitors' request, do we have anything?
No, nobody is signing.
Okay. Prove, prove before, it's be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the six twenty-seven, six twenty-nine, seven eleven, and seven thirty-one. Warrants, internal claims, auditor reports be approved, we have a motion?
So. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Treasurer's report, be resolved, the treasurer's report for June and July be approved, we have a motion?
So.
Sam and Justin, any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Policy updates, uh, you want to take us?
Yeah, I can quickly go through. So, um, the third reading for the F M L A, um, included the revisions, um, with, with choice D as, as our option. Really, that's about it. The only concern that I had that I contacted our attorneys was, is with the new paid F M L A law that is, that is coming out, that is out there. That does not affect school districts, that is something that we could negotiate if we wanted to, but it is not required. So we're leaving the policy as is for now, so you have the revisions on that. And then, um, one that I just added real quick that does need to be approved before the school year starts is the policy on meal charging and meal shaming. The only, uh, the change to that is we used to have a reduced breakfast and lunch for a quarter and the state is now, um, picking that charge up, so that does not cost any child the reduced of the quarter, so that is all free. So we have full plans and then free, so there is no more reduced. So that policy just reflects that change.
Any questions for John on those two policies? Are we comfortable with moving forward with them? Okay, can we get a motion to approve, uh, policy six five five one, uh, as recommended? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Uh, seven point two, be resolved, the policy five six six zero, be updated and approved as written, you have a motion?
So.
I have one second from Justin. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? And call.
So, hello. Um, so all that I have discussed today is fund balance, and I put a link sorry to you last minute in, in there. Eighteen nineteen is closed. Uh, the preliminary audit report is not out yet. You all might know, we've talked about Forgasby and how we have to value health insurance that's offered, um, on our financial statements. The employer retirement system has to do the same thing, so we have to record part of that onto one of our, uh, trial balances. So we were waiting for them for that. Nope. So I'm not, I don't have the actual financial statements, they will be, they will give me the preliminary ones, I will report them out to you. Um, but there are no findings this year. Um, I need the corrective action on the regular audit was done and completed, and they had no additional findings for us, which is really good. This year, we did have a seventy-five, I can't read the exact number that's in there, but the seventy-five, seventy, seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollar surplus, um, resulting mostly from the following. We had a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in homeless aid that we weren't anticipating at all, which roughly comes from about eight homeless students that we had enrolled in the district this year.
How many?
Uh, in seventeen eighteen, we got the eight, eighteen nineteen, uh, eight, seven or eight, I can't remember the exact number. And then we closed out our, our capital projects. So we had a handful of, um, we had our phases that we closed out, and then we had our hundred K project and, um, our emergency project. The total amount left over from those was a seventy-four thousand dollars. So that has to be included in your revenue and an, an expense in the capital fund, is to properly record that for accounting purposes. Uh, we had a thirty-six thousand dollar, um, surplus on our B O Cs refund, more than we had anticipated. Those alone account for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of the surplus. So, in addition, we had our administrative shuffle, I would say, and that saved us about seventy thousand dollars because we had, uh, the teacher on special assignment. So those accounted for the majority of, of what we were looking at for our surplus. But we also, again, just did a good job at, at, um, not spending more money than we budgeted for. So as I had previously also discussed, the appropriated fund balance, that's really what we appropriate year over year for, um, expenses that we don't really know about. So it's, it's kind of your cushion that's built into the budget. So we didn't have to use any of that, um, this past fiscal year, or the prior one, we did. And I'm anticipating potentially having to do that in, in this next fiscal year. So as we reduce our, um, appropriated fund balance, we also reduce the amount we have for that cushion in our budget. So you just have to be really thoughtful about spending, um, on that. So my, my proposition is as we look at, at our capital project, is moving that seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars into the capital reserve as consistent with what we've done in the past. So, just so you all know, a portion of that surplus can't just be moved into the, into the capital reserve. So that money that we had from our debt, from our, um, capital projects that was kind of left over, the amount we didn't spend, that has to go into our debt reserve. So that entire amount, amount did not go into the capital reserve, it was slightly less than that. So, and we have some interest that we earn in our reserves, and I allocate that based on the percentage of, of what the reserve is for that.
Did we approve that capital reserve with a ceiling to a?
Two million dollars, yep. Um, I am going to at some point look at our reserve fund plan that we approved the first year that I was here, and we need to go back through that. The state has approved the ability for us to create a T R S reserve as a sub-reserve for our employer retirement reserve. So even though right now, our rate is eight point eight six for the teachers' retirement, over the last five years, that's been cut in half, basically, essentially, so it was as high as I think.
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen or sixteen, um, oh, it, within the last ten years. So, um, like our employee, um, retirement contribution reserve, we would, we would wanna set that one up and have limits and look at what we're really doing with, with our reserves again and see where we wanna be, so. So next, um, meeting, I will, when, when we are formally approved with our, with our financial statements, I will ask you to approve that as a transfer. Um, you did an up to amount, but then we have to go back and do the exact dollar amount into the reserves that they go into. So this is just information I wanted to share with you tonight. Does anybody have any questions on, on that? As a percentage of our next year's budget, our surplus was about three point six percent. So that stays roughly within what our goals, our goal was, I believe, a maximum of three percent, so, so close, so close to that. Obviously, we don't wanna go, as we've discussed, we can't spend more money than, than we budgeted for. So that's why we built those cushions in there, so. Right now.
Okay. Any questions?
All good.
Okay, John?
Yeah, just some announcements. Um, yesterday, I wanna thank Connie for this, we finished up our, um, new teacher orientation. It was a two-day, um, last Thursday and, and yesterday, and I thought it was, um, a great program to, you know, assimilate the new staff coming into this building. Um, they learned a lot, we had some activities for them, and I just wanna thank Connie and the rest of the administrators for being a part of it. Thought it was very valuable for them to see the pride and to see where we're headed, so Connie, great job in, in spearheading that. I wanna thank Jordan and his custodial staff. Obviously, you are aware, we're moving sixth grade over here to the middle school, which is no easy task, along with, um, obviously, um, we have a company sealing the, the parking lots and just the extra things that we are asking him to do in his staff. They are on target, they are actually ahead of schedule, will be ready and open for the first day of school when kids walk in here. I ask you to walk around and see the floors and see the gymnasium and there's still a lot of work to do, but I just wanna thank Jordan and his staff because they're, they're working around the clock to, to get this place ready. Welcome back letters went out to district staff. Uh, just so the board knows, Thursday, the twenty-ninth, August twenty-ninth, before the Labor Day weekend, is, um, a workday for the teachers, so the teachers will be in district all day, just working in their rooms. And opening day will be Tuesday, September third, for all of the entire district. We're gonna have breakfast here in the middle high school at eight A M, so if any board member wants to join us. And then at about eight forty-five, I figured you could, uh, kick off the ceremonies with a inspirational speech. And then, uh, the rest of the morning is some presentations, we're gonna outline some of our district goals, go over some safety initiatives, and then in the afternoon, um, the, uh, the teachers will be in, uh, their respective faculty meetings, but if you can join us in the morning for the kickoff, that, that would be great. And, uh, fall sports started this week, it was great to see come Monday morning, uh, coaches and kids running all over the place and kicking soccer balls and, and gearing up for the fall sports, so, um, looking forward to a great, great season, so, we're, we're rocking and rolling.
So we had intentions of doing our goals, you know, as a pre-meeting, and we didn't, we weren't able to do that because of the substitution we made, so we'll need to hit us with some dates to try to get that done.
I will.
Keep that moving forward.
Yep, absolutely.
Any questions for John? Okay, moving on to new business, uh, be resolved items nine two through nine twelve, be approved via consent agenda. Have a motion?
So.
So.
And you want to be the second, Chris? Justin?
Sure.
Any discussion? So SOAR agreements included there. So we, we met with the community and, uh, there are not any major changes to the language of the SOAR agreement. Um, we did discuss with ALBA that our community was uncomfortable with, uh, baseball moving in and out, and they're gonna do their best to, um, have their own baseball program for as long as, as they can field the team.
What do you mean by baseball moving in and out?
Uh, so baseball was an umbrella team and, uh, which basically means, um, that they play at our school and under our colors and as a hornet. And so that was the intention, was that any umbrella team could go back and forth. So, you know, we had the community meeting, we described to the community what that meant, so it wasn't a surprise to us, it was a surprise to our community. We made ALBA aware that if they feel like they're gonna have to come back as an umbrella, our community is comfortable seeing this team go back and forth.
You mean with their players coming to play under the O A umbrella?
So there's a difference, yeah, there's a difference between a SOAR, there's really only three SOAR teams that are umbrella teams. And potentially in the future, that team will have to be merged the way football is, the way soccer is, the way the cheerleading is. If they, if they're not able to put a, a team on the field anymore. The soccer field was a concern for our community and, uh, we, we spoke about that at the meeting also, and, um, they felt like they had a solution, they had soccer matches on the football field, is that, is that accurate? And I think everybody felt like it was a safe place to play, we'll find out shortly if, if that's one of those games that we have. Uh, other than that, I think the meeting went well and, uh, like I said, not a lot of major changes to the agreement. Is there any other discussion regarding all of the items here that will be approved? Okay, can we have a vote, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Uh, communications, I don't think we have anything? Okay, discussion around the alone? Nothing was submitted? Uh, subcommittee reports, uh, Haxton, SOAR instructional technology, was there anything there? Uh, safety committee court of conduct, we've gone through, so I think we're good there. Uh, personnel, be resolved, items twelve, two through twelve seven, be approved via consent agenda? You have a motion?
So.
Second? Second. Any discussion on any of that?
Is Josh under, um, an individual contract?
He's under an individual contract, yes.
Any other discussion?
And do we really have to, um, approve transportation assignments because it's kinda like, um,
it's previously put down, yeah.
I'm not gonna study the routes and tell you that I don't want this driver driving there.
It's just a formality.
It's just a formality.
Sure, just more so information.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? I think we have a need for any exempted session, although we've already done closing remarks, Justin? Chris, you have any closing remarks?
No.
Bonnie?
No.
Laurel?
No.
Okay, I think we're good. Um, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Small motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Adjourned at, um, it's on six, six fifty-four. Thank you, Earl.